To call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. It's April 5th and it's 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to do a COVID-19 update. And I'm going to start out with a press release. It just came from the county commissioners. And this is for immediate release. The daily COVID-19 cases in Skagit County has been trending upward over the past several days. New cases are in the double digits for the first time in nearly two weeks. Prior to this, the county's numbers were ranging between five and nine cases, which made this recent uptick alarming. As a reminder, Skagit County must meet the following metrics in order to remain in Phase Three of the state's roadmap to recovery. The Washington State Department of Health evaluates the county's progress every three weeks. With the first evaluation scheduled for Monday, April 12th for our population size. The metrics must include, we need to stay with 200 new cases, under 200 new cases for 100,000 per 14 days, and staying under five new COVID-19 hospitalization per 100,000 population per seven days. A week ago, we were at 83 cases for 100,000. So this is why it's a little scary that we're trending upwards. Based on Skagit County's population size and the average of 18-plus new cases a day, it's enough to push the county over the 200 cases for 100,000 benchmark. It would only take seven new hospitalizations in a week for the county to move back to Phase Two. So once again, we must remind all our citizens to wear your masks, social distance, wash your hands, follow protocol, even though the vaccines are here. We just cannot get complacent. And we really want to do, we want to stay in Phase Three, where indoor gatherings must be limited to 10 non-household members and large gatherings up to 50 people or less when they're outside. If gatherings, please wear your mask, et cetera. So that just came out this afternoon. So remind your neighbors and friends. Now to my COVID update report. As of today, Island Hospital in the last year has tested 14,103 community members for COVID-19 with 282 positive cases. And we've admitted 50 people to our hospital and we've had zero fatalities. To date, Island Hospital has vaccinated 5,773 people. At Island Hospital, the current vaccine type available is Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson was available in April for two days. The following people are eligible in the current Phase 1B Tier 1, 2, 3, and 4. That's all healthcare workers, first responders at high risk, anyone who lives or works in a long-term care setting, anyone over the age of 60, anyone 50 or over living in a multi-generational household, teachers and staff who pre-K through K-12 schools, workers in childcare and daycare settings, high-risk critical workers who work in certain congregant settings, agricultural, fishing vessels, food processing, grocery stores, corrections, prisons, jails, detention centers, public transit, and remaining first responders, restaurant and food service construction and manufacturing. People 18 years and older who are pregnant or have a disability that puts them in a high risk for COVID-19 are people 18 years and older with two or more comorbidities or underlying conditions. People, staff, and volunteers in certain congregant living settings, correctional facilities, group home, and people with disability settings where people are experiencing homelessness and have, do not have access to services. In Skagit County, to date, we've had 4,460 positive COVID cases. We've had 65 deaths and 280 people hospitalized. The actual case number for our zip code is between 390 and 399 cases. The total number of vaccines distributed in Skagit County by all vaccine providers is 68,477 vaccines have been given. In Washington State, we've had 370,000 cases of COVID. We've had 5,326 deaths. In the United States, we've had 30.8 million cases of COVID and 555,000 fatalities. Worldwide, we've had 131 million confirmed cases of COVID with 2.85 million deaths, and that was reported by the World Health Organization. Skagit County announced another round of assistance funding available of 8.9 million in rent and utility assistance for Skagitontonians impacted by COVID-19. You may contact the county commissioner's office or here at the city of Anacortes and we can get you information on that funding for people impacted with those, with needing rental assistance or utility assistance. At this time, that completes my COVID report. Does anyone have anything to add to that? Okay, well then I'll move on to Item 2B. And at this time, I'm going to ask for the confirmation of William "Bill" Harris as our new Anacortes Fire Chief. Mr. Harris brings years of progressively being responsible for fire and EMS management experience to the position of Fire Chief. Mr. Harris is relocating from Sunnyside, Washington. The selection process included a screening interview, a large panel interview, a meet and greet with all fire department personnel, a comprehensive background investigation, and I believe it was important to have a thorough process and the panel interview board represented broad perspectives. The interview panel included council member Christine McClellan McGrath, representing the personnel in the public safety committees, interim Fire Chief Mike Gans, Assistant Fire Chief Jack Kennedy, Division Fire Chief Nick Walsh, members of each shift of the Anacortes Fire Department, including the IAFF 1537, President Cuban Oliver, Police Chief John Small, Police Captain Dave Floyd, Finance Director Steve Hogland, Administrative Services Director Emily Shue, and myself. And at this time, if you have any questions, please ask me. And if you don't, I'm looking for confirmation. Bill Harris to be confirmed as our new Fire Chief.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
I certainly appreciate the packet materials. Providing that information, I think, is pretty important to transparency on appointments of department heads. And I move confirmation of the appointment.
Mr. Walters, and who was, was it Miss Clellan McGrath?
Sure, it was McDougal and Miller, all of us.
Okay, well, who said it first? All right, I'll go with Ms. Clellan McGrath. And thank you all. So we have a motion and a second for confirming William "Bill" Harris as our new Fire Chief. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Chief Gans, you're on. Can you bring Mr. Chief Harris on? And maybe if you'd like to introduce yourself to the council this evening, Chief Harris, and welcome to Anacortes.
Thank you. Glad to be here tonight. We just got on. I'm afraid I missed most of that conversation, but it sounded good at the end. First, I just want to say I really appreciate the opportunity. You guys putting your faith in me. Looking forward to a great career here in Anacortes and doing some great things here at the fire department. And I'm really excited to be here. Tomorrow's going to be a good day.
Okay, well, welcome. Looking forward to working with you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we'll move on to Item 2C, which is our Port City Liaison Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Clellan McGrath.
Thank you. I'm just pulling up my notes. Thank, here we go. So yeah, we met on March 30th. And it was Mr. Carter and myself and staff in the port. We had a pretty efficient meeting. We discussed a little bit about the port's position and the city's position when it comes to community events and reopening and how we're going to handle it. And we really, both entities feel that we need to work together and have really clear communication so that we are on the same page. So that was, I think, pleasing from a city standpoint and pleasing from a port standpoint. We were going to, you know, continue to listen to the state mandate and the county and move forward responsibly. We talked a little bit about Second Street that might come, that'll probably be coming up in front of us in the near future about an interlocal agreement that will benefit, will preserve the city's ownership of this, of the right-of-way on the street, but also works so that the port can use it in the meantime. So that should be a good thing of us all working together. We discussed a little bit about the Anacortes Ferry Terminal and the Ferry Advisory Committee. We've got some, some new blood and some fresh eyes looking at what's feasible and possibly going for some funding either from Senator Murray or possibly Rick Larson, just looking at what opportunities there are to reimagine our ferry for the San Juan Islands. And then finally, we, we brought up the Maritime Strategic Plan, just wanting to revisit. It's been a few years, making sure that we're on, keeping it front of mind and trying to achieve kind of the four main goals. And I think both the port and city said, hey, we're, we're doing a pretty good job of, of staying on track. And we may look if there's anything new to add or modify in the near future. We're all going to try to take a quick look at it in the next month or two. And the really exciting thing is the, I think, the, the port and the city are going to get together and talk to our new chamber president and hopefully be able to go over that with her. Because she seems to be really interested in both the port and the city working together. And then finally, the last thing was a quick update of the Maritime Washington National Heritage Area, which is pretty much the whole coastline of Washington State. From Gray's Harbor to Blaine, there is a virtual workshop, April 20th. I know Mr. Lutzford from the, the museum is going to participate. But anyone in the community who would like to participate is welcome to join. And so if you go down on their website, the Maritime Washington National Heritage Area website, they've got more information on it. I think that's about it.
Thanks, Christine. Any comments? All right, we'll move on to our Public Works Committee.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Morton. Hey, thank you. The Public Works Committee met just prior to this meeting. Council members Young, Walters, and myself were there with staff. And we went right down to 5:59 like we do because it's always so interesting. We have a lot to talk about. The first thing we spoke of today was encouraging public participation at committee meetings and what that would look like, the logistics of that, and the importance of communication and transparency with our constituents. We led, that led us to the Outfall Project, which staff sent out a request for qualifications to 10 marine contractors. We had six responses and four were excellent, highly qualified contractors that have been invited to bid on the project. So that is moving right along. Most of our talk today, we talked about the Whistle Lake Dam, which is about 100 years old. And it's an earthen dam that the Department of Ecology is strongly encouraging us to take a look at and see what level of integrity it has, which involves equipment. And it's the farthest spot away from the road in the forest lands practically. So it's tricky for a number of reasons. And there will be permits involved and a really careful look at what is required of the city and how best to do this. Everything, even the inspection is tricky because holes need to be bored in the dam. I mean, there's just, it's just super, super complicated. But staff is on this. Public Works is moving forward with this and figuring out the best way to proceed. Basically, there are three options. One is to modify the dam. Another is to build a backup dam in case this one would fail. And the third one would be to eliminate the dam altogether, which is highly unlikely and would be terrible. So anyway, there's a lot to it and it's fascinating and more to follow on that subject. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any additions to that report?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
In addition to the Outfall contractor, we also talked a little bit about the Outfall position. Some members of the Cap Santa Maria community had brainstormed some other alternatives. And a couple of us had encouraged Public Works to evaluate in a formal way those alternatives and identify why they would or would not work. And we also then provided that information to the interested residents. The upshot is, we continue to think that the U Avenue alternative is probably the best route for the Outfall. And so we're remaining on that course toward design and permitting and constructing the Outfall along U Avenue. But we also talked about how important it will be to minimize the impacts of the construction in terms of traffic control, scheduling, notifications to neighbors. Public Works is going to be generating a project website for this project. Haven't seen that yet. Don't know if it's going to be on the city's website or some other website. But it, it, this entire episode seems to really demonstrate the need for those types of communications where all the information about a particular project is in one spot. So we're all on the same page. And we can all know that we've done our due diligence and made sure that the, what appears on its face to be a simpler alternative has been evaluated, not just discarded. So I, I think that that whole experience has been pretty beneficial, both to the neighborhood but also to council. And I assume that we'll hear a little bit more about it next time Public Works gives us an update.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Item 2E, which is our Fiber Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougal.
Fiber Committee met on March 25th. We have shifted to monthly meetings in recent weeks. So I'm going to provide some data on numbers that we had as of then. And of course, you know, the installation teams are rolling every day. So these numbers are a little bit behind. But as of the 25th, we had a total of 644 customers in service. That's 556 residential and 88 business customers. And we have market share, like signup rates in CBD, Old Town, and M Avenue, all exceeding 40%. Actually, you know, basically all right around 45%, which is a really good number. And the aerial expansion for 2020, we've got about 218 customers as of then were already activated and another 150 or so pending installation and about 27% signed up. And then the West End, we've got about 20% signed up for the West End expansion that's coming later this year. So construction updates. We're looking at backbone construction beginning kind of end of May, early June for the West End project. And then the installers will look to turn up customers, kind of following them. So the, basically the latter half of 2021. And, you know, hopefully get through the entire West End as, as quickly as possible toward the, the end of 21 and into 22. And then for 2022 and kind of the East End, you know, we've identified that as being applicable to the Economic Development Administration grants. So that's the $2.25 million grant. So committee or not committee, but the department has submitted, they're working on some final sort of documentation requests from the EDA folks. They have reviewed those, the initial application and approved it. So, you know, pending this last documentation request, hopefully we'll be able to go to, you know, award and, and RFP for, essentially for construction of the areas, the remaining areas east of D Avenue. So that's, that's the main stuff on the Fiber Committee Report.
Thank you. Any additions? All right.
Mayor Gear, sorry.
Mr. Miller, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just one addition to that. The kind of, as we expected, the West End's going to be a little more expensive to do the installs. So those numbers came in a little bit higher than we expected. But I really am, I'm still optimistic that because of the take rates, I, I think we'll, we'll be, we'll be okay. I think the number was what, like $2,400 and per, per install first, on average for the West End. So it was a little bit higher than projected. But again, you know, it's all about generating customers and I think the program's still moving along quite nicely, generating that, generating that customer base that we'll be able to make the numbers, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. At this time, we'll move on to Item 2A, which is our Finance Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Finance Committee met, I think, two weeks or more ago. And talked about a couple of things. I missed the first several minutes of the meeting. So maybe Mr. McDougal can fill in any gaps. One of those items on the agenda was proposed fourth amendment to our interlocal agreement with the county for the jail. I think it's largely fairly straightforward and it'll be coming forward to council later. The second item was the, the money that we are going to receive from the Federal American Rescue Plan. That's about $2.9 million. Staff have generated a draft plan for, maybe it's charitable to call it a plan, a brainstormed list of things that they might want to spend that $2.9 million on. And I think it's, it's definitely my opinion, maybe the opinion of the, of the committee. Mr. McDougal can nod, give a head nod if so, that we ought to talk about how we're going to spend that money as a full council. Interestingly, the city of Anacortes seems to have received much less money per capita than other similarly situated cities. And Mr. Hogland was investigating that through Congressman Larson's office to try to get some clarity as to why that was. It, it, it has to do with the fact that we are designated a metropolitan city of, with residents of more than 50,000, which clearly we don't have. I haven't heard yet if Mr. Hogland has gotten any further answers. But it's definitely a big question mark because other cities of our size would have gotten quite a bit more money comparatively. So we're following up on that. And then I think there was a third agenda item. Mr. McDougal, do you recall?
That was the two items that I had notes on. And I think there was as well.
Yeah, that might be it.
Thank you for that. And we'll continue to look into why our allocation was different than other cities. At this time, then I'm going to move to Item 2G, our Library Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, the Library Committee met. We were, had to work a little bit on scheduling. There was a little bit of a scheduling snafu, whereas the schedule on one hand may not have shown an acceptance, but it really was in some cases. And so Mr. Vogel and I, we reached out to the members and Mr. Vogel and I went ahead and had the meeting and it decided to give a briefing to all of the members and everyone seemed to be agreeable to that. But here's the update from the library. They began in-person by appointment visits April 1st. And patrons can now call and reserve a half-hour time slot. And here are the details. Their reopening schedule is they're closed Sunday and Monday. And curbside hours are Tuesday from 11 o'clock to 6 o'clock and Wednesday through Saturday from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock. In-person by appointment express browsing is Thursday through Saturday from 12 to 3 o'clock. Appointments are made over the phone. Michelle's line is first and then the main line. And they'll use a shared calendar to make appointments two weeks in advance. And the appointments will be every 30 minutes. And they'll have kind of a script to make sure people understand their experience at the library will be different. And that's one of the things they really wanted to make sure they work with the public on, to be completely open. But also to let them know that the experiences will be a little bit different given that we're still operating, you know, under COVID restrictions. Computers must be scheduled for 30-minute uses. Four are available. And between them, there's a wipe down between uses and have wipes, and there will be wipes at every station. There's a, the children's remodel is also going on. They'll be moving forward with the children's remodel this year using funds donated to the Library Foundation by the Maxtons, honoring their wishes to update the children's area. They have an architecturally designed floor plan drawings that they're working from and are working with Darcy, our, our legal department, to put forth a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Library Foundation. There's approximately $115,000 earmarked for the children's remodel. And that was just really a generous offer and a generous donation. The young adult remodel will focus, will be a focus of 2022 and looking for fundraising opportunities. They're investigating those and looking at ways that it can help generate revenues. And they have architecturally designed plans for the projects as well. The other news is that they have a newly installed standing laptop bar at the top of the stairs, thanks to Matt Jackson and Brandon Kraus for making that happen. And they're excited to be moving forward with the library electric vehicle charger with help from the Library Foundation. A big thanks to Russ Pittis for making that happen. And, and that's about it. But, you know, I really, Jeff and I had a great conversation. It was showing how hard the library really is working to continue to provide services and how they're really meeting the demands of our public, given the limitations of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there anything else?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougal.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Carter this evening. He's potentially going to be joining us late, but he may not be able to free up in time to join us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have motion, a second, excuse Mr. Carter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Before we leave, leave the library report, I know, I'm sure everybody on council probably received a comment by a citizen. And I think it had to do with understanding the library hours. And I know it's incredibly challenging to, to get that word out. But if there's any way that, that staff or, or any of us can think of ways to get the word out about when, when you can actually go. Because that was a lot of information from Mr. Young and, and communicating that on a regular and constant basis will hopefully alleviate that problem as we transition. So whether it's on our city site or, or paste it on a big board out in front of the library, I, I think that would be helpful.
Right. And I, and thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Miller. I also think for the community to understand, it's not as simple as just opening it up. You know, we have to clean everything as we go. It's, it's, our restrictions are pretty, pretty restrictive. Yes, Mr. Young, were you going to say something else?
No, I was just going to echo Mr. Miller. I think, you know, in talking to Jeff and the team, you know, they really have been working incredibly hard to get their messaging out. And it's really been so fluid, given the restrictions, whether we're here or there, and then how do you communicate that? But to your point, Mr. Miller, they're working hard on it. And I think that they're, you know, it's duly noted, maybe even the sign out front. But, but they're working really incredibly hard toward it. Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Clellan, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry I didn't end up making the, the Library Committee meeting. But I know in previous meetings, one of the challenges is that, you know, in a retail environment, people pick up something and they purchase it and they take it home and it's done. Whereas with a library, things are coming and going and being returned. And I think there's, Mr. Young can probably correct me if I'm wrong. They're still having to kind of quarantine books and items. So it, it, there's a, there's a few more layers involved than, than our typical, you know, grocery stores and, and retail stores that are only touch what you're going to purchase, so.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to public comment. Okay, so at this time, um, we're going to public comment. And if you have something to talk to the council about that is not on the agenda, if you could, uh, raise, uh, raise your hand at this time, um, I will call on you. Okay, we have one person swat share screen.
Share screen.
And then?
And then.
The what?
Red underneath screen one.
All right. Okay. Right, this one?
Yep. I hit share the bottom right.
Okay.
And I'll click panelists. For participants. And I can allow it.
Okay. All right, June?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, June. Welcome.
Okay, I'm looking. Um, I've never done this before, so I'm reading your guidelines as we go along. Uh, my name is June Steen. Um, I'm here in response to the, um, notice, um, that I got in the mail about, um, petition to vacate. Uh, the address is the 11th Street adjacent to block 42.
So June, we, we are going to talk about that this evening. So we could get your information at that time.
Okay.
Okay? But, but thank you, stay on with us. Uh, there will be an opportunity, um, to talk about it, but not at this moment, because we want to stay in that agenda item.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So now I hit stop. All right, now go back. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. I don't see anyone else.
On top, June?
On the. Okay, all right. So we're back now to our consent agenda, item four. Uh, A and B minutes and approval of claims. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item four B.
All right. Would you like to do anything with four A?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor Gear, for seeing clearly what, what I needed to do. I'd like, I move that we approve item four A.
Second.
Now we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor of approving item four A, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Young, item four B.
Mayor Gear, I just really, in looking at the reimbursements, I, I, I don't want to get back on my soapbox about, um, purchases, uh, not just Amazon, but I will use that as a placeholder. Just wanted to remind the team and the staff, uh, how important it is to, when possible, make, uh, local purchases. And local could be in, within the region, but just trying to help, given COVID, the devastating effect it's had on small businesses, that whenever that's possible, to really give it their best effort to move that forward. You know, I, I noticed sort of an uptick in, um, some things that can be made, uh, purchased locally. And, um, and then there again, there are some things that cannot. But with that said, I move that we approve the reimbursements.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Miller to approve item four B. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. So we're now on to item five. It's a public hearing. And Ms. Swetnam, can you, um, take it from here, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you and thanks to council and members of the audience. Um, so, so this, uh, this public hearing that was noticed for tonight is on the vacation of portions of 11th Street and B Avenue. And this is part of a property agreement that the city entered into back in 2020 with the Winds and the Ortman family corporations. Um, last Wednesday, we received, and we, to my office, received a request from about 30, uh, homeowners in the neighborhood that we postpone this public hearing to give an opportunity to provide them with some more information about the vacation. And so, uh, what, what staff is recommending, and we, we've, we've talked with the mayor about this, is that we not open the public hearing tonight, but continue it to April 19th so that we can fully evaluate and respond to these public, public comments. And accommodate that request from them that we not move forward with the public hearing at this time. Um, staff supportive of that, that's consistent with the contract. We've got to bring the public hearing, uh, within between 20 and 60 days of the adoption of the resolution. And moving this out to the 19th would still be consistent with that timeframe. So.
So do you need a head nod or do you need a vote tonight on this?
Uh, we don't, uh, m- m- mayor, you, you've updated the agenda to reflect that we've continued the hearing. So we don't need to counsel to take action on it, but I just wanted you all to understand the backstory and that we've, and that we've pushed pause on that and postponed it so that we could, we could really be responsive to those comments and questions from the public.
So for the folks that are in attendance tonight, like Miss Steen, um, their opportunity to comment will happen on April 19th. Is that correct?
Yep. And I would say also that they're more than welcome, anybody that's got comments or feedback. They're certainly more than welcome to reach out to the mayor's office or to staff. I'm happy to get questions and comments directly. Um, and we can make sure that those make it into the packet for the 19th. But typically, the public hearing is a great opportunity for folks to participate, ask questions, um, provide any feedback that they have on that petition.
Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
My only concern about that course is that some people obviously arranged to be here tonight. We, we could continue the public hearing after hearing comments tonight, right?
If, if council's inclined to do that, I would recommend, Mayor, that you go ahead and open the public hearing. But staff is not prepared to present the, the, um, you know, the introduction to the topic. So it might be difficult to take comments sort of out of context.
Perhaps we could ask the attendees if there's anyone who can't make it, uh, at the later date.
Okay, um, let me do that.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton?
I, I also would like to hear comments tonight, if possible, because they'll be recorded and then they can also be addressed.
And, and I'm happy if, if you'd like to do that. I, I can introduce the petition generally. I don't have maps or slides put together to show, and I, and I think that, um, just based on some of the, the comments that I've seen already, that it's going to be really helpful for council to understand the layout of the five separate parcels that we're vacating. Um, but I'm happy to give a general overview of the timeline of how we've gotten here, just so there's a little bit of context before you start getting specific comments.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young?
You know, I, um, you know, recognizing that there may not, may or may not be people that have, um, you know, made it a point to try to be here tonight. I do think it's important that, um, when we're hearing comments, we have that contextual background necessary. Because I think that when particularly the public have questions, because I have questions. So, you know, I, I, I really personally would love to review that and hear those comments. Because then I could move forward with asking additional questions that may be relevant or even spawned by what they've said as well, too. So I'm kind of toward, um, waiting until next, the 19th personally, but I'm one of seven.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm, I'm inclined, if, if somebody can't make it to, to voice their concerns ne- next, the next time we schedule this, then, um, I'd be happy to hear from them tonight. But I would really encourage them to get a written comment to the staff. Because then when we see that on council, along with the packet material, uh, a- at least for me, and I think I could maybe speak for a couple of people on council, having that in, in, in context. And then when they come to testify, uh, it's, it's even more impactful. So I just encourage folks, if, if there's an opportunity to provide written comments, or there is an opportunity to provide written comments, to go ahead and do that. And when we do have the public hearing continued on the 19th, I think, uh, that, that helps, that's helped, helps us understand the, the issue better.
Okay. Maybe I could ask any one of the, the attendees, if they, uh, can't come on the 19th, to raise their hand right now so I can see that there is someone I should call on tonight. Okay, I do have two hands up. So do we want to hear from them?
So.
Darcy, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, if, if council's inclined to hear from members of the public, I would recommend two things. First, that I provide a little bit of an introduction to the topic. And second, that you open the public hearing so that those comments are part of the record.
Okay. So I guess I'm going to do that. And then we have just two people that have their hands up this evening. So I'll open the public hearing, um, on ordinance 3087. Vacating the right-of-way on the portion of 11th Street adjacent to blocks 242 and 243. And at this time, I'll let, let Ms. Swetnam introduce the topic. And then I will, um, take any questions from the audience.
Well, thanks, thanks for that, Madam Mayor. And again, I apologize for this not being the introduction that I, that I'd hoped to be able to give you on this topic. But, um, maybe this will just provide some context so that those comments can, can make sense to you all. Um, so, so this is a vacation that comes to council that's been in discussion, um, for at least a year, if not longer. And the, uh, this is a, a conversation that's been ongoing with several of the neighbors in that neighborhood about an opportunity to vacate portions of B Avenue and 11th Street in exchange for the city obtaining easements for the Greamas Channel Trail. So there was a, um, there was originally a property agreement that was negotiated with the two, two other parties to this agreement. Uh, the, the Wind family, the Ortman family, and, and two other property owners. And those two other property owners, um, ha- have decided to, to, uh, withdraw from, from that property agreement. And so staff brought the agreement to council with just the Winds and the Ortmans. Um, back it was the fall of 2020. And the, the basic structure of the agreement was that the city, uh, and the, and the Winds and the Ortmans would enter into an agreement to, uh, start the process of vacating some certain portions of right-of-way that were unopened on 11th Street and B Avenue. And in exchange for that vacation, if it was granted, uh, the city would then obtain easements for the, for the trail. So the, the agreement, uh, we're, we're kind of at step one, which was a ci- city-initiated vacation petition. And this did come to council. Um, I, I apologize for not having the date off the top of my head, but it was a month or two ago, and that was the adoption of the resolution scheduling this public hearing. Um, so, so this has been to council several times, um, in the, in the past, you know, handful of months. Um, but, but at this point, what, uh, what staff is recommending council move forward with, once the public hearing happens, is the vacation of five separate areas of right-of-way. And in exchange for that, uh, the Ortman family agreed not to oppose the, uh, the petition to vacate a portion of 11th Street in favor of the Wind family. And, um, the, the city would then, once the vacation is complete, get that easement on the waterfront side of the Wind family property. So it's, it's a little bit of a, um, you know, th- this isn't a straightforward vacation, if, if vacations are ever straightforward. Um, because this is something that's been under discussion for so long and was, and was negotiated with the parties before, um, we brought the property agreement to council back in the fall. So that's, that's kind of the snapshot. Um, and my intention on the 19th is to bring you all a map that shows the areas to be vacated, shows the easement area that the city will obtain. And that, and that has some more of the specifics that speak to the criteria and the code about the, about the vacation itself. So that's the, that's the background. I'm happy to answer questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Counsel, any questions, Ms. Swetnam at this time? Okay, so at this time, then I'm going to, um, go back to our attendees. And, uh, June Steen sells her hand up and I'll see if she would like to speak to us about that.
Okay, I think you can hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, um, I live on the alley behind the Ortman property. Uh, and I was here when they originally bought that property and built on to, and built on to, and built on to the existing, um, Rambler-sized house that was there. I, I, I want to say first of all, I am very much in favor of the Greamas Channel Trail. And that tends to make me in favor of this, um, trade. I think, um, they have an arrangement to buy the Wind property, um, that is sort of, hmm, known in the neighborhood. That they plan to acquire that property. So I think of it, um, as sort of, um, this is a deal for the Ortmans. And I can understand vacating that strip of 11th Street that is, um, between the properties. However, I'm curious about, uh, the strip on B Avenue. That kind of seems overkill. You know, I would like someday to think perhaps they will have curbs and sidewalks, uh, in this part of Old Town that does not have them. And I wonder if, you know, why, why they need that wider property. And it might, you know, interfere with future plans for improving that street.
Well, thank you, June. We now know what your thoughts are and your questions, and we can address that, that when the public hearing comes back on the night.
And may I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
Um, I, I know that the Ortmans have, um, wanted at various times, um, to add, um, another building to their property. Their compound, uh, and for various reasons, uh, it was not allowed. So I have a concern that, um, if, if they own the Wind property and the Wind House, um, that they will sort of, um, get around the, um, the newer regulations about, uh, building on the high bank, uh, and, um, you know, I, I don't know the proper terms, but the, uh, the laws about, um, building close to the, to the bank and on the waterfront. Because adding on to old construction has different regulations than new construction. And that's kind of how they got a, got around building that huge construction in their compound. They started with a small Rambler like the Winds' house and just kept adding to it. And I really would not like to see that happen again, because it really is against the spirit of the, the regulations to protect our waterfront. So I know that's not really the subject of this, um, these vacated streets. But, you know, I have a concern in that direction about what the Ortmans plan to do, um, with that property.
Okay, we, we'll, we'll answer all those questions during the public hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So now I'm going to go to Jessica. And Jessica, you, you can unmute yourself and we can talk now.
Hello, my name is Jessica Guzik. Um, I just, I agree with what June is saying. That's the feeling of most of us in the neighborhood is that we were curious about why they need that second strip. And we're also very interested in protections of the character of the neighborhood and not having more giant house go up. So I would love to hear some kind of, um, specific information about that that won't happen would be my favorite thing to hear on the 19th, um, if I'm able to make it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? No one else has their hand up. So at this time, I will go back to the council meeting and back to Darcy. And at this point, Darcy, is there anything else we need to do this evening other than continue the hearing?
No, Mayor, that's great. We'll make note of those comments and make sure that staff's comments on the 19, 19th address those. comments on the 19, 19th address those, those questions from the public.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I think while this agenda item is still at the forefront here, I think it's great that we're gonna be covering this on the 19th. I think it's great that we're gonna have an in-depth presentation about it on the 19th. I do think that we need to acknowledge that the public notice was defective in that it met the minimums, but those aren't sufficient. Like, we must have a map, we must have an explanation that goes along with the minimum required pieces of information that go on the notice about really what is happening in this, in this process. And I think that's definitely a lesson for this particular item, but it will be for the next one as well. It's not sufficient to put out a public notice that has a bunch of legal descriptions that nobody can read. And I think that led to a lot of angst in the neighborhood, in the community, and unanswered questions and rescheduled meetings. So we need to do better at the outset there.
Hey, thank you. All right, so at this time, we're gonna leave the public hearing, and we're gonna move on to item six under other business. And six A is a presentation from Waste Management and their annual report, and this is open for public comment. And I want to welcome Mr. Buckermeyer, and he'll introduce our guests this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As council's well aware, the Waste Management and the City of Anacortes partner to provide both solid waste and recycling and food and yard waste collection for, for all of Anacortes. Solid waste is collected by City of Anacortes, and Waste Management provides recycling and food and yard waste. Waste Management has provided us their 2020 annual report, and it's, that's a part of your packet. And I'd like to introduce Michelle Metzer from Waste Management to provide that report. Thanks for being here, Michelle.
Welcome, Michelle. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me this evening. My name is Michelle Metzler, and I'm the Public Sector Manager for Waste Management. So my job is to ensure that we're providing great service to the City of Anacortes. I'm gonna try to share my presentation. Spare me one minute. So I'm not able to share my screen. Do you have a copy of my presentation?
Yeah. We're working on getting yours.
Okay, great. We'll just go ahead and get.
Mayor Geer?
Yes.
Ms. Metzler's presentation has been included in the council packet, so it is available to the public and to council members.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll just get started, and if it pops up on the screen, great. If not, it is in your council packet. So thanks a lot for having me this evening. I just wanted to give a quick update on the services that Waste Management provides. We like to give an update once a year to the city and to council, just to let you know what we've been up to and keep you in the loop on what's happening in terms of recycling and yard waste. So Waste Management's been providing service to the City of Anacortes since 2015. And as Fred mentioned, the city provides the garbage, and then Waste Management provides recycling and food and yard waste collection. So we have a contract with the city to provide the services for residential and multifamily units. And then some businesses choose to use Waste Management for, for their business compost or business recycling, or some choose to use a different provider. And we service the City of Anacortes with a fleet of compressed natural gas trucks from our hauling site just down the street and just outside of Burlington. So 2020 was an exciting year for many reasons, but one of the good things that happened in Anacortes was residents continued to be strong recyclers. So in Anacortes, you have really high participation in recycling and compost, which is great. And the material collected is on par with some of the leading programs in Western Washington. So it's pretty impressive for a city the size of Anacortes to have such strong participation in recycling and composting. And I think that really speaks to the ethic of, of residents and, and how it's really just built in to their values, that it's important to recycle and participate in, in composting programs. So that's really great to see. One of the, the slides in, in the presentation has graphs of the, the amount of material collected from residential and multifamily and commercial properties. And one thing that's pretty common as a trend in Anacortes as well is that we typically have higher participation in composting from, from single-family units. So it's a lot easier, and a lot of times people have more of a need to compost food scraps and yard waste. And typically, you don't see that as much in, in multifamily properties. So that's an area for improvement within the city. Great, here's some slides. I'm gonna hop on to the next one. And then just wanted to give you a, a brief update on how we've been operating during the pandemic. So, you know, much like every other business, we've had to drastically adjust our operations, but have been really proud to continue to provide uninterrupted service to residents and businesses in Anacortes. A big part of that is, you know, our employees and really their commitment to providing this essential service to the community. So in the beginning of the pandemic, we really saw that pride of our employees come through, and I think that's really what's helped carry us and be able to continue to provide those services. You know, we made a lot of adjustments early on in the pandemic to ensure that we're not only protecting our people, but also continuing to provide service to the community in a way that's safe and effective. So, you know, a wide range of, of adjustments made upfront, little things from, you know, switching where we store driver boots instead of storing those in a locker room, moving those outside, to big things like, you know, moving our customer service center fully remote in a matter of less than a week. So we made a lot of adjustments early on, and those have really helped us to be successful throughout the pandemic. We're also really committed to our employees and our frontline drivers, and we made wage and benefit guarantees for all employees. So we didn't have to do any layoffs, and that's something else that we're really, really proud of. We also had to make adjustments at our recycling center. So all of Anacortes's recyclables go to our recycling center in Woodinville. And for those of you who haven't been to a recycling center, I would love to give you a tour sometime, once we're out and about again. It's really fascinating to see how recycling centers work. But it's made up of a lot of people close together who are sorting materials. And so we had to reorganize how we distribute people on the recycling lines and provide additional protective gear to make sure that they were all safe as well. And then next, I wanted to just give you a brief update on where we are in terms of recycling. So recycling continues to be a really challenging, a really challenging industry to work in. So in 2018, the industry was greatly disrupted by China's Operation Blue Sky. And what Operation Blue Sky was, is a really an attempt for China to try to clean up their environment. And they didn't want to import what was perceived as polluting materials and really increased. So, so with that, they banned the import of certain mixed plastics and mixed papers, and that was really disruptive to the global recycling market. Most of, about half the world's paper before that was going to China. So half of the world's paper needed to find new markets in a really short timeline. And so although this was three years ago, it still really continues to impact recycling markets. As you can imagine, it, it takes a long time to build new paper mills. It takes a long time to really develop that infrastructure. So, you know, we're continuing to find new homes for all the recyclables that we collect in, in Anacortes and elsewhere. But it's much more challenging, and there's also been a, because there's, there's so much supply, there's been a really, really a, a really high demand for really clean recyclables. So that's important for us to make sure that we're collecting clean materials, and then also that at our recycling center, we're, we're sorting materials to the highest quality to ensure that we have markets. And then on top of that, COVID has continued to create challenges for recyclers. You know, as, as more people have shifted to working from home, you know, there, we're seeing more recyclables generated at the curb, and then we're also seeing shifts in the, the materials that we're seeing at our recycling facilities. And then, you know, of course, the whole purpose of recycling is to create new materials. And so we've been seeing fluctuations in the demand for different materials as consumers shift the things that they're purchasing. So for example, you know, in the beginning of the pandemic, there was a, a huge increase in the demand for cardboard, as people were, you know, starting to shop online a lot more and really changed their, their habits. That's really leveled off now, but that's just an example of, of kind of the spikes and, and changes that we're seeing throughout the, the pandemic. And then we're also seeing a, a new type of contamination in the recycling, which would be face masks and gloves and more, more wipes. So that's something that we're continuing to, to try to get the message out that those items aren't recyclable. And then to ensure that we have clean materials, not only are we making investments in our local recycling facility to upgrade the technology and invest in our people, but we're also working to educate the community. One of the most useful tools that we have to educate the community is some bright yellow oops tags. So if someone puts something in the recycling that's not recyclable, we'll put those on the cart, and it's just serves as great feedback for customers that they put something in the recycling that shouldn't be there. And those are, are really effective at helping change behavior. We also, last year in 2020, Waste Management was recognized as the Recycler of the Year for Innovation for our digital outreach. So we developed a new campaign called WME Connect, and it was a way for us to connect with, with businesses and multifamily properties to help provide the same sort of tools and assistance that we always have provided, but in a new digital format. You know, something that we're still using today, and I think it'll be one of those programs that's a long-term service offering, because I think, you know, some people are still gonna want to connect virtually, and then, you know, at some point, we also hope to return to more in-person education and outreach as well. And lastly, I just wanted to thank you for your partnership. We really appreciate the opportunity to serve the City of Anacortes, and thanks for allowing me to be here this evening.
Thank you, Michelle. Counsel, do you have any questions for Michelle this evening?
Mayor Geer?
Yes.
Thank you. I always really appreciate the presentations that you bring, Michelle. You really do bring it in a good way. You keep it simple, but yet it's detailed and allows for us to follow what's taking place in such a great way. I wanted to compliment you on that. You know, I, I'm a fan of Waste Management. It's just the reality of what we have to do as a society, and that, you know, if we don't get our arms around it and do the things that we need to do to help the process, you know, we're still gonna be burgeoning and burgeoning and burgeoning without any, with continuing, I think, detriment to the planet, really. Has there been, I know this may not be an answer for you, but I'm really hoping that the industry as a whole continues its work toward having greater products, consumer-driven products, or consumer-using products that are far more able to be recycled. I, I think that that's the bottleneck, because we're such in, we're in such a, a, we're a society that likes instantaneous use. And so, you know, I know you guys are working toward it. I'm hoping Waste Management have some auxiliary businesses that may spawn as a result of that. But, you know, I, if there's anything you can add to what you guys are doing in that area, I'd love it. But I know it's not with just something you guys are doing, though. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for the question, and I, I appreciate the opportunity. So, you know, I think one of the many challenges with recycling is it's a, a very disjointed system. I mean, you have manufacturers producing things, you have it being distributed, and then consumers, and then, you know, we just get stuff at the end of its life and have to figure out what to do with it. So it is, it is really challenging. Our recycling center, center manager often refers to it as unscrambling an egg. You know, we get all these random things, and then we have to somehow make an egg out of it. And so we do have a sustainability consulting wing that works with businesses to try to design for recyclability. So we'll work with, you know, we work with companies like Amazon or Walmart, or, you know, a lot of the, a lot of big brands on recyclability. The main challenge is that they're trying to design packaging for a lot of different things. You know, it has to be cheap, lightweight, display inks well, look nice on a shelf, make, you know, maybe ship well. So there's all these other things that are really competing with recyclability. And recyclability is just one attribute of something. You know, another, another big attribute is just looking at light weighting. So light weighting is when you're, you know, taking a, a plastic bottle and trying to use less plastic to make that same bottle. That doesn't necessarily affect recyclability, but an example of where it is in conflict with recyclability is we're seeing the shift to a lot of plastic pouches instead of, so you can think of those in terms of, you know, like something like tuna used to be in a metal can. Some of it's still is, but now you're seeing it more in pouches. From shipping perspective, you know, you used to see things come in more cardboard boxes. Now a lot of those are just in plastic pouches. And although those pouches are not recyclable, they actually use less energy to manufacture, and you can fit more in a truck when you're shipping them. So they actually have a lighter environmental footprint. So there's, that's just one example to give you a sense of all of the, the considerations that go into some of these things. And, you know, it's really important for things to be recyclable, but it's also important for us to reduce the environmental impact. And a lot of times, there are synergies, and a lot of times, there's a way to reduce the environmental impact even when something isn't recyclable. So that's one of the things I really like working about in this industry, is it's very dynamic. It's always changing, and there's just a lot of different pieces in play.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Always good to see you, and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, then, I'm going to go to item six B. This is Resolution 3027 opposing the Imperial Metals Mineral Exploration Permit in the British Columbia Stadion Headwaters. Ms. Swetnam?
Thanks again, Madam Mayor. So in your packet is a resolution and a letter prepared with the feedback from council at the last meeting, discussing the opposition to the proposal for mining permits up in what's known as the Donut Hole. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I think council had a good discussion on the issue last week, and it, staff, staff tried to capture, capture the, the direction from council about what to put in there, so.
Mayor Geer?
Yes, Ms. Walters.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. My only question is, I see that it's, the letters addressed to Director Coghill, who's the Regional Director of the BC Southwest Mines Division. Some of the other letters that I, that council saw from tribes and other organizations were, were addressed to a number of, of individuals in the, the Canadian government and other places. Will this letter be sent to other people in addition to Mr. Coghill?
That's a great question, Ms. Moulton. I noticed the same thing, and it was our intent to make sure that we send this out to all of the names that we can, that we can get our hands in, so that it, so it gets as, as much distribution as possible.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Walters?
I think this looks good. I would note just that it talks about our $60 million water treatment plant, and I double-checked with Mr. Hoagland. It's a $70 million water treatment plant. So I mentioned to staff that we should, we should tweak that in the fourth recital on the first page of the resolution. And then, section two, after therefore be resolved, is that we ask VC to add the Donut Hole into their park system. I think it'd be great if they did that. It's not strictly required, though, to achieve our ends, though. Really, I think what we want is extinguishment of those mineral extraction rights and development rights in that upper headwater watershed. So I'd also be okay with rephrasing it that way. But I think they'll get the message either way. either way.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone from the audience would like to comment. Okay, so counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Geer?
Mr. Miller?
I think the staff did a really nice job of capturing the concerns of the city, so I moved to approve Resolution 3027.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. McDougall. Is there any, yes, Ms. Swetnam?
Uh, I just, just kind of a procedural note, uh, would council like to make a motion to amend the resolution to reflect the changes suggested by Councilmember Walters?
It, Mayor Geer, yes, uh, with the changes recommended by Councilmember Walters.
Okay, so a motion and a second with the changes, and, okay, Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Clitha McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Walton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and, um, have a good evening. I heard there might be a really popular basketball game on tonight. So we'll see you all very soon. Goodbye. All right, so-